Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, please be seated. Remember to silence your devices of the cellular variety if you have them in your possession. Welcome to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda is always item number one is citizen concerns. If you have a concern of an item that is not listed on the agenda, now is your chance to come forward, come forward and inform the board. Hearing none. Item two is approval of the agenda for today.
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Radek. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. Items three through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the June sixth meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five from Board Administration includes item A, which is approval of a lifting of a tax suspension for initials TA. And B, approval of resolution thanking and commending a county employee for years of service. That employee is Lynn Spink with the County Treasurer's Office. Item six from Board Administration includes item A, which is approval of a notice of property sale resolution for a parcel also known as nineteen fifteen Iowa Street and setting that for Tuesday, June twenty seventh at four thirty-five P.M. And item B is approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcels also known as ten fourteen Ruston Street and ten fourteen and a half Ruston Street and setting that for Tuesday, June twenty seventh at four thirty-seven P.M. Item seven is from Human Resources. It includes item A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. And item B, approval of retiree request to have the health and dental insurance plans for herself and spouse. Item eight from Prairie Mechanical Corporation is approval of request to use vacant lot at eight thirteen Pierce Street for setup area for crane for equipment upgrade project at eight twenty-five Pierce Street, also known as a CenturyLink building and associated documents are included in the backup materials. Item nine from Secondary Roads is a consideration of permit to work in the right-of-way for Hunt Farms. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move it. Second.
Motion by Radek, second by DeWitt. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. Item ten is an action item from the City of Sergeant Bluff and the Mayor John Winkle. This is approval of Woodbury County resident Shannon Meyer to the Sergeant Bluff Public Library Board of Trustees. The application is included in the backup materials along with relevant ordinance.
Any reason that wasn't on consent or?
Just in case there are any questions about it. It did have a personal application filled out and thought that the individual might be present tonight or someone might want to comment on it.
I'll move it.
Certainly could have been.
Second.
Motion by Radek, second by Potabom. Thank Shannon Meyer for her willingness to serve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. We will now adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item eleven is an action item to approve the minutes of the June sixth meeting and I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Radek. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. We now adjourn the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting and reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. Onto item twelve, which is an action item from Secondary Roads, County Engineer Mark Nera. This is to receive quotes for twenty seventeen Route and Crack Seal Project on HMA Roads.
Mark Nera, Woodbury County Engineer. I see Karen was reading my mind. Ben's passing around bid tabulations for the project. Our first bid is from Denko Highway. Our, yeah, Denko Highway Construction Corporation. They are out of Mingo, Iowa. They have filed the proper bid bond. Total bid price, one hundred six thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. One oh six nine three zero. Our next bid is from Midwest Coatings Company. Proper bid bond was also included. Total bid price, sixty-three thousand eight hundred thirty dollars. Six three eight three zero. Our final bid is from Sioux Commercial Sweeping Company. They were sent a check in lieu of bid bond. Total bid price, fifty-nine thousand two hundred thirty dollars. This is a project where the unit prices on the bids and the totals are quite clear. I think I can make an award recommendation.
Very well.
I recommend award of the project to Sioux Commercial Sweeping Incorporated of Sioux Center, Iowa. Their unit cost was seventy-eight cents per foot. Their mobilization, nine hundred fifty dollars and traffic control, nine hundred fifty dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the recommendation.
Second to motion by Radek. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Item thirteen is from the Rural Economic Development Department Director David Gleiser. Includes first item A, an action item to receive the award of five hundred dollars from the Professional Developers of Iowa Scholarship Award.
Good evening, Supervisors. David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. As you know, I'm in the process of pursuing the Certified Economic Developers Certification. The, my professional association, Professional Developers of Iowa, have awarded me a scholarship for five hundred dollars to continue that process and pay for an upcoming Economic Development Institute. That one will be the second of the third required institutes where I will complete coursework and earn the credits to sit for the exam.
No reason to say no.
The auditor likes it when we document money coming into the accounting system.
Move to receive the award. Second by Radek. Discussion. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. Item B is an information item to update the board on the FCC Chairman's visit to Woodbury County.
So just really wanted to share this more or less as a good news report. Last week, I was actually able to have dinner with the Chairman of the Federal Communications Commission as he was in Iowa for part of his tour across five northern plain states, across the Midwest, to talk about rural broadband issues. I found out late Friday afternoon that the Chairman was going to be in Iowa talking about rural broadband issues. And I was trying to find out where exactly he was going to be and find out his schedule to see if there was any chance that I could sort of crash the party and show up and get, you know, have some face time with the Chairman and talk to him about what's happening in rural Woodbury County. Could not figure out where he was going to be at until the day before, until Tuesday. And found out that he was going to be in, I think it was Spencer in Lorenz, Iowa. And I had heard that he may be in Sioux City, but I couldn't figure out when he was going to be here, who he's going to meet with. So I wrote an op-ed piece in the Sioux City Journal and it was more or less sort of a hail mary, open invite for the Chairman to let him know that we're excited he's in Iowa talking about rural broadband and that we've got some success stories here in rural Woodbury County. And if he's in Sioux City, we'd love to meet him. That ran Wednesday morning. And Wednesday morning, I got a phone call from the FCC and said that the Chairman saw the letter. He appreciated it and wanted to invite me for dinner. He was actually going to be in Sioux City just that night as a layover. And I said, I'd love to meet the Chairman. Would it be okay if I invited a few stakeholders from Woodbury County? I invited the General Manager for Western Iowa Telephone, Heath Mallory, as well as two executives from Long Lines, Bill Gockel and Paul Bergman. Bill's the Long Lines VP and Paul's the CFO for Long Lines, as well as the President of our Suland Chamber of Commerce, Chris McGowan. We met with the Chairman that night for dinner and spent nearly three hours having discussions about current events as well as rural broadband connectivity issues. It provided the opportunity for Wyattell and Long Lines to meet with like the most important man in their industry, talk to them about what they feel like could be improvements at the federal level in terms of federal reporting requirements, programs, mapping, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I was able to actually give the Chairman and his staffer some information on legislation that Iowa has passed in the last few years related to broadband connectivity. It's part of the Branstad Administration's Connect Every Acre Program. And so we, you know, essentially made the case for Iowa wanting to be a partner with the FCC on this rural broadband agenda. And just wanted to share that information with you. I did write a follow-up piece in the Sunday's newspaper just to kind of tell that exact story. So it was really cool, something that I never would have thought would have really happened when I wrote the letter, but lo and behold, it worked, so.
Very good. Hope he remembers it.
Yes.
Your turn.
I'm just waiting for the call to join the Trump Administration.
The Trump Administration's been warned about you, David.
Well, I did give him some information. I gave him some Iowa code about some of the programs that we had. My resume's also on the bottom. I'm kidding, I would never leave here.
Any thoughts on this item? Next item is a presentation of the new website.
So this is really just going to be a brief overview of the redeveloped website for my department. Previously, we had contracted with the Golden Shovel Agency for Website and Social Media Content Services. We've terminated that contract and developed a new website for my department that I'll just show you really quick.
Feel free to unceremoniously turn around, fellow board members.
Or ceremoniously. What's that gargoyle fight thing? That looks interesting.
So here's the homepage. Pretty simple. One of the things that I believe is important that when folks find us on the internet is that they are very quickly able to determine our location in the country and in the state at a glance. So that's a little bit about that graphic and why it's there. Here we have some links that will show you the available properties that we have, both buildings and sites. Labor shed analysis, that's important information for site selectors or for companies that are looking to locate in Woodbury County. They want to take a look at what our labor shed and what our workforce looks like. And then also just a bragging section here. And that's just an article from Site Selection Magazine about the Suland MSA and how we again ranked for number one for economic development for jurisdictions and communities under two hundred thousand. If you click here, you can see the Location One Information System. LOIS is the acronym. LOIS is the database that economic developers use in the state of Iowa as well as, you know, in the Midwest and across the country. And this is where we will catalog our available property in rural Woodbury County. And it gives us a platform to host information related to buildings and sites.
Is there a way to ever partner with the local commercial real estate offices to also include there?
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, our Location One Information System is fed by the commercial real estate brokerage community in Suland as well as the economic development professionals. So, commercial real estate, realtors and brokers, they actually have access to Location One Information System. And so they can upload property on LOIS. I can upload property on LOIS. And it's, the hard part is just the managing it and making sure that the content is up to date. So a Realtor, you know, might upload it, forget to take it down on this website and it's still displaying. So we have a process internally where we're contacting them on a periodic basis to make sure the content is up to date. And then other than that, a brief overview of some of the tools that we have, so to speak, to work with companies and let them know about our state-level programs. And that'll provide a link to the Iowa Economic Development Authority website and their programs. Talks a little bit about the commonly-used tools that we use as far as tax increment financing and that we do have the four twenty-seven B industrial property tax exemption. The available properties again will take you to LOIS. This is kind of important. What I like about this page is that it, you know, provides at least some online presence for some of our communities that may not necessarily have a municipal website or a presence on the internet. And so just, you know, basically went around the county and took pictures of all of the signs for every city in the county and put a little something up in terms of their website, their population and and then just a really simple contact us page. So wanted to make it very, very clean and simple, sort of by design. And that's about it.
Do you have a section for recent news or anything like that?
No, but that's something that I could put down here on this, on this section here. It could, I could change this to keep our press releases, you know, history of our press releases and so forth and dedicate a page to that. I could have this portion, and something I've been thinking about is having this be a link to a page such as that. And, you know, you want to keep the content fresh, so that's something I'll probably definitely consider. And then another thing that I'd like to build and host up here at the top of the page would be another link to a Small Business Resource tab. So folks could find links to, you know, SEDC, SBA, you know, other technical assistance resource providers that might be useful in helping small businesses form or expand.
So what role, if any, did Golden Shovel play in bringing this online? I know we're not using them anymore, but how did this particular site come to be?
Well, so basically, I used this, built this myself through an online content management system. The hosting is through GoDaddy and I use Website Builder to actually build it. So it's not actual HTML code that I'm, you know, programming. It's sort of a template drop and pick and drop design sort of build out.
Good. And so the ongoing maintenance will be easier and cheaper than it would have been.
And, yeah, and that's, you know, and at some point with the consolidation of economic development and planning and zoning, it probably does make sense to have the services that are offered through the, you know, new community and economic development department to be hosted under one roof. I'll let the future director make that decision and take it from there.
That may make sense. May make sense to link to the county page. We'll see. Any thoughts on the new website? I'm glad it was done in-house and I think you're happy with it, so.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks for the update and that's good use of our screen behind us.
Looks nice.
Be sure and, you know, mention it when you're out in the community and I'm sure you will and give demonstrations as you, as you can, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Item fourteen is an action item from Board Administration. This is from our Budget Director Dennis Butler. Discussion and approval of resolution to assign Development Agreement and Transfer Economic Development Tax Increment Rebate Payments to New Cooperative Incorporated from Platinum Grain LLC.
Before we get started with this, I'd like our Economic Development Director, David, come up here with two gentlemen that are from New Cooperative and just introduce them before we get started here.
Sounds good.
Supervisors with me today, we have two members from New Cooperative, Bob Dobson and Frank Hughesman. Bob's the Controller and Frank is the Director of Operations. I'll let them briefly explain or talk a little bit about New Cooperative as well as their current presence in Woodbury County.
Appreciate it, addressing the council today. A little bit about New Cooperative. We're one of the larger farm cooperatives in the state of Iowa. Our sales are almost a billion dollars. We have approximately five thousand farmer owners. We operate out of thirty-six locations. Basically, our trade territory is from I-35 west to the Iowa Nebraska border. On the north is Highway eighteen and the south would be Highway one forty-one. Our presence in Woodbury County started at nine one of fifteen when we acquired Western Iowa Cooperative, which has four locations here in the county, Sloan, Hornick, Pearson and Correctionville. Our tax base in Webster County is approximately nine million dollars today. We have sixty employees, five hundred employees approximately full-time company-wide, sixty of which are based here in Woodbury County. We're excited to be in Woodbury County and look forward to continued growth in Woodbury County. And with that, I'll let Dennis proceed on with the transfer agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Information that's.
Thank you.
Okay, back in two thousand twelve, May eighth, Platinum Grain entered into a development agreement with Woodbury County in a process of building their grain elevator down there. Since then, they have added another one or two silos or elevators, grain storage. In doing this, we did agree to a ten-year tax increment rebate. We are in the third year of that rebate. The first five years are seventy-five percent of the taxes caused or created by increment values rebated to the company. Then the next five years are fifty percent. So far, we've actually done about two hundred and twenty-three thousand rebates in the first three years. There is an aggregate cap over the ten years, up to two million dollars and the agreement, or the rebates would cease. At the present time, it'll be, they'll never reach the two million. They did agree to two million dollar tax assessment, minimum assessment. They well exceeded that. They're up close to six million, I believe. And when the company is being sold from Platinum Grain to New Cooperative, part of the agreement to sign this has to be approved through the board, signing a tax increment rebate schedule over to the new company. So that's what we're before you today and we do have a resolution included today. We have a letter from Landscape, or Planscape Partners, kind of going through it, addressed to our Chairman. And then we do have the resolution to pass if so desired by the Board of Supervisors, transferring this assignment over to New Cooperative.
I think that's certainly fair, especially, you know, given your commitment to the community and the commitments the board has made. And really, this has worked out better than we could have hoped in this situation and I think we're all involved, so. Thank you for coming. Any questions from board members for the gentleman or for Dennis?
This was our first tax increment project, by the way.
And it's been a success?
Yes.
That's good.
I'll move the approval.
I'll second Radek's motion to approve the resolution to assign Development Agreement and Transfer Economic Development Tax Increment Rebates to New Cooperative Incorporated from Platinum Grain LLC. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes four to zero. Thank you, again. Item fifteen is from Building Services, information item from Director Schmitz, LEC Optimization Plan, Projects C one and C two.
The information item before you is for the Law Enforcement Center Optimization Plan and Expansion Projects. As you know, we've been working toward or focusing on our current intake project. As we have reiterated all along, it's been the Sheriff Department's wish to proceed with the second project or not do the first project if we're not going to do the second project. And so we've been working on plans, C one and C two. If you remember back in February, the board ratified several different projects presented by the Goldberg Group and they were listed in Projects A through I. One of the board, one of the projects the board did not ratify at that time was Project F, which would have been the elevator project portion of that plan. So C one and C two identifies interview and assessment units, C two medical and staffing. What we tried to do is look at all these areas and match the optimization plan goals with the items we were looking at and to make the more facility, or make the facility more useful, of course, to our detention staff and accommodate the detainees that we have there. Some of the things that we identified as goals that we were able to, or will be able to hopefully capitalize on our daily operations and the flow of operations and how those mesh daily, improving on the way things are done and from booking all the way to being detained in a cell. Classification is an area we looked at. Additional holding cells that would provide segregation for different classifications was identified. We looked at the nurses area. Currently, our nurses area is not large enough and especially with the new onsite medical system or plan that we plan on going toward. We definitely need a larger area there and so we've drafted plans and specs to increase the size of that area and make it more functional. The same with the medical examination area. And off of both of those areas, we've improved safety with the addition of holding areas that are right next to or inside of the exam and the nurses area where someone can be held while they're waiting to be examined or to be prescribed medications or such things. So they don't have, don't have to be transported from one area to another while that takes place. Staff safety, again, as part of the staff safety, those isolation rooms will definitely help. That'll limit the transportation around the facility with those inmates. Increased padded holding cells and holding cells that are located at the, at the beginning of what would be the cell block or the entrance to a cell block, closest to the entrances. So the inmate doesn't have to be taken all the way back into the interior of a cell block. Their first cell will be a padded. Their first cell will be a padded cell right near the entrance. Security and electronics upgrades. Again, any of the projects that we will be looking at, we will be looking at HVAC upgrades to the system. Our current systems are beyond tax to the limit, and so we'll be trying to identify anything we can do to improve the HVAC as we, as we look at any of these projects. Also, as part of C-two, there would be a staff needs assessment, which would be conducted by the Goldberg Group. And our, again, our sheriff's staff is very interested in having this conducted. What this will help us do, or help the administration do is identify how many staff members, basically, and in what areas, in numbers that they should have for employees staffing certain things. That is going to change as, as projects go forward. Those will change due to things like electronics, cameras, and locations of the master control areas and things like that, and how the, and how the blocks are laid out. And that'll change due to, we're thinking that, or Goldberg is thinking that we'll be able to see some staff reductions or a change in the way we're staffing, not necessarily reduction, but a change in the way we're staffing, due to the utilization of cameras and voice controls. And so they'll have a better oversight of what's actually taking place in the facility. But that'll, that'll all be determined by the, by the study, so. This is a pretty in-depth project. We've kept the Sheriff's Department in, included in all of our meetings. We got extensive input and extensive changes with their input on, on many different drawings. Shane with the Baker Groups here. Shane, is there anything that I might have missed that you think we should add?
No, I mean, they don't.
We don't have the Goldberg Group come to these meetings. It isn't, I don't believe, fiscally responsible to bring them in until we get a little bit farther along, to, to let them give their spiel, if you will. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
And he's always said, board members may reach out to him at any point if they like, so that's been helpful, too. Any questions for Kenny? Well, I had, you know, have reviewed these numbers, you know, with, with you, Kenny, and Shane, and Dennis. And, you know, the good news, certainly from a fiscal standpoint, is that, in part because we're able to achieve very favorable interest rates due to our low credit utilization, and of course, due to our moves during the budget cycle of, of taking one-time savings from going to ten-year bonds and, and putting that away with the intent to move on in this project, we can afford this as it's presented, as it's estimated, without a tax increase. And I think that's very good. Very good situation for us to be in, and follows through on our commitment to the Sheriff's Office. Any thoughts from the Sheriff's Office? Happy as bugs in a rug? Okay. And this will come back, Kenny? You said this is information today?
This, this will come back as an action item to, to approve funding and, and eventually seek bids.
Very good.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, there's an action item from the County Sheriff, Dave Drew. This is a request for approval for the purchase of rifles through the employees' payroll deduction.
Tony, we're here from the Sheriff's Office. I'm gonna hand you guys a piece of paper here.
Does it say what they're buying?
I just handed you an example of what we're having the guys fill out, and our people fill out. This all stems from years ago, City of Sioux City doing a project like this, where they purchased rifles for their officers, and then the officers paid back to city to actually own the rifles, and we're taking that step. We do have some rifles for our Sheriff's Office right now, but they're pretty plain Jane. I mean, this gives an opportunity for the individual deputies to put the optics they want on there, get the magazines, get the flashlight, get the, excuse me, the grips, whatever they, however they want to outfit it, and then utilize it for work. And as it, as it explains in there, we want to have the county purchase the rifles, and then over a period of twelve months, twenty-four pay, twenty-four checks, the deputies will put that money back into the account. And if for any reason the employment was terminated, they agree to purchase the remaining Mount Ode with their, with their final check on, on the rifle, so.
Has the county done this in the past?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have available funds to?
Because this is gonna be paid back within the same fiscal year, the recommendation is paid for the general basic fund, not a cash reserves, as it will come back that fiscal year.
Okay.
This is basically an interest-free loan.
It's a, it's a great benefit to offer. I mean, technically, it's, I mean, under HR, would this be something that normally would be? I, I'm totally for it. I think it's a great idea, but, I mean, is this something that normally would have to legally negotiate as a benefit?
After paying it all back.
Right.
But technically, it's a-
It's not a subject of bargaining in any way.
Okay.
So I would think it's, it's totally up to the board. I don't think there's any apprehension on our part at all. So it would be, I see no legal pitfalls.
I don't know anything about it, so I can't comment. My, my only question is, is this pre-tax or after-tax? I'm assuming it's after-tax dollars.
Yeah, it would have to be after-tax dollars. There's, there's-
That would be my only question.
There's nothing that I can see that would make it pre-tax.
We talked with two companies, we talked with three companies, and actually, there's different options that our deputies can go with. One of them is Brothers in Arms, and one of them is Sioux Sales, that they're buying their rifles from. And what you have in front of you is one of our deputies, that is the price quoted from whichever company they're buying their rifles from. And, yeah, that's, that's after-tax on there. I mean, they're, they're giving, this is what it's gonna cost to purchase your rifle. Okay, there's ten guys buying us the rifles from us. Here's the total. This is the money we need.
No, I'm not talking about tax on the property.
Oh, you're talking about our paycheck?
Right.
Before tax.
It can't be pre-tax.
Dennis?
Two other things, that these will be bought July first, I believe, so they can go on twenty-four installment plan. Also, has been discussed with the county auditor, because there's an apparel deduction he's gonna have to deal with, and he has given his blessing.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good thing to do. In the past, I know it's, it's, it's been requested before, but I appreciate the patience in, in being on the county's time clock from a budget perspective on fiscal years, because I know that's easier for Dennis and everyone else that deals with this. And going forward, would this be a, something every, you know, before a fiscal year begins, you would check with your staff and see who'd like to participate?
Yes, we could do that, and I can tell you that County Counciloration got into this a little late, and they're very interested, so I'm thinking next year, they might, they might be.
I could see Rocky bringing it up for county board, too, right?
Conflict of interest?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. A lot of Sioux City police officers have rifles.
And they took it a step further, Marty. Next year, they bought gun safes. They went, they went further, so.
It's a great program.
There's a motion by Raddig, second by DeWitt. Discussion on approving this practice and procedure and form. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, passes four-zero. Thank you. Item seventeen is the chairman's report, beginning with item A, the June twelfth Department Head Meeting, attended by myself and Supervisor Raddig. We had a lighter agenda this month, which, as I mentioned, was not always a bad thing. We always go around the room and get departmental updates. Actually got out about the same time we normally do when we have a full agenda, so gave departments a time to update the board on different fiscal areas of interest. So, Mr. Raddig, do you have anything else to add?
I don't, but on the last item, we should probably get these all shredded, since they are individuals.
Just a second, take you back.
Yes, very good. Item B then is the Simcoe Executive Finance Committee. I attended June eighth. There were insurance renewals for vision, dental, life, et cetera, for staff. There was regular staff evaluations. I thought that was helpful for, for us to look at as a cooperative, and I think it is a good thing to be involved in, of course. It's a lot of federal, federal dollars that we helped to administrate. That's all I have for that. Item eighteen is reports on committee meetings. Hearing none.
I didn't have a committee meeting, but I did head out to the open house for the one-eighty-fifth. That was really a neat event. Great presence there for the Sheriff's Department. It's pretty much the first group of people you get to see, so. Yeah, it was hot.
It was hot. There was some wind, but it died down, so. Very good. Item nineteen, any citizen concerns? Mr. Shane Albrecht.
Kind of had a meeting, we gave everybody an update. So for our intake project, we've been working with the Sheriff's Office. That should come, PJ's office right now has the front end of the bid documents, to review those, to make sure that's getting all ready to go. We're looking for bids to come back before your approval, right after the Fourth of July, to go, to take this out for bid, to hopefully get the project started first part of August. So just trying to give you an update, so where we are there. And courtroom two-oh-seven, we finished up the points list last week. That's been turned over, and we're now in courtroom two-oh-nine, just to keep you up, up to speed on where all that stuff is. Thank you.
Very good.
Dave Drew, Sheriff. Under the gun bill, we're not sure yet on the gun permits. They're going to be done in Des Moines. It's kind of like your driver's license, from our understanding, and you'll get a card, but it will be stamped with the Sheriff of one of the ninety-nine counties, still approved by the Sheriff locally. But it will not be in effect by July first, because they're, they're running way behind, so that could be a few months. So we are not charging the people for now to get-
I believe it is, right?
They're not, we're not charging them for a card, because that process is changing, and we're not gonna go through that, so the state's not gonna charge.
So who's gonna do the background check?
We do the backgrounds. We still do all the work, but the paperwork, that card will be sent to Des Moines to be processed, and it's kind of like your driver's license. You'll probably, I'm thinking, Tony, do we get a piece of paper first? Do we get a piece of paper for the gun permit first? I think Todd's waiting. And then if you want the permit, it'll show up weeks later. And also, under the twenty-four-seven bill, another subject, they're still writing the law, so that won't be ready by July one either. But obviously, we're in favor of going forward on that, and then having, I think there's kiosk. So we're looking at all those other things, and we'll, we'll learn more as, as the months progress, so. But any questions on the gun permit? Other than that, and then, you know, there's a whole lot of things along with that gun permit, but we won't get into that, yes.
While you're up there, have we heard anything more on the courthouse, being able to bring them?
Over what?
For bringing weapons into the courthouse.
I'm gonna let PJ talk about that.
I know they were waiting for some opinion.
Thought I'd get out of here while I said anything. Right now, there, there is nothing new. What we thought was being sought was a legal opinion via the Attorney General's Office by the judicial branch. I was just informed, although not verified, that that never happened. And the reasoning behind that was because they didn't think that they were going to get an answer from the AG's office on that particular topic. But I just found that out after all this time of assuming that that had been done. So I've been in consultation with some of the other counties to try to see what's going on out there, how they expect to proceed, and I'm going to probably be asking that our security committee, courthouse security committee, get together one more time and bring what I think might need to be done, or the steps we might be able to take under the, what we believe the law to say. And then from there, bring that to the full board, based on how we think we should proceed.
Did you gain any clarity, you know, clarity from your source on whether or not there was a review requested?
Again, what I heard, and, and they didn't confirm that, but they hadn't seen one, and the comment was, they don't think, and a formal opinion was requested, because they didn't think they were gonna get an answer. That's what I got.
I can guarantee, if you don't ask, you won't get an answer.
I will, I will just say this, talking with the sheriffs in the larger counties that have it, they are maintaining it. The Board of Supervisors continue to say that that would be maintained in their courthouse, those that already have it.
Do you expect you'll get any other clarifications on whether or not there's sense in the judicial branch asking for that?
I do not. And it, you know, after looking at that and getting that explanation, went through to see who could actually request that opinion, and the judicial branch themselves, I don't believe, could have requested that opinion. They could have requested somebody to do it on their behalf, but it couldn't have been them to do it. So at this point, even if they were to try to request one, it's very doubtful that they could receive an answer prior to July one at this point.
Could you request one?
I could have requested one, but again, if we did it now, we couldn't get anything prior to July one. There's just no way they would respond in that timeframe.
No, I don't think-
But I am one of the individuals that could request AG's opinion.
Well, at some point, a question will be asked. So maybe we want to ask it. Any other board concerns? We are adjourned.